My name is Jane Tomshoe. I'm the president of the Colonial Heights Civic Association, which are the streets, Cherry Tree Lane through Pear Street. So if you're from Colonial Lakelands, you received one of our notices and we appreciate you coming and joining us tonight. Rich Crowson is here. It's his show tonight. Pretty much, we're going to have a PowerPoint and then afterwards, we'll do a question and answer. We hope to be out of here by nine o'clock. So if you can kind of hold your questions until the end, unless it has something to do with what he's talking about specifically. Other than that, I would like you to sign in if you would like to be added to our mailing list. The Colonial Heights Civic Association has a website. I listed it there on the board. Please feel free to go up and take a look at it. We do post information that's necessary to all of us. Okay, that's it.
Jane, thank you and your association for giving us this opportunity to talk about some of our budget challenges for 2012 and some of the plans that we have to deal with some of these issues. And before I get into the presentation itself, I just want to point out a couple of things that are relevant to this information that you're going to hear about tonight. The question is about exceeding the 2% cap, the statutory cap, on our amount to be raised by taxation. In 2012, we can actually stay within the 2% cap for this municipal year, for this budget for 2012. The problem is, if we wait until 2013, the impact of waiting will be much more devastating next year than it is this year on the budget. So we are trying to be proactive and we're going to try to explain, or as I'm going to try to explain as best I can, some of the things that we've been doing in the past anticipating this issue. The other item I want to point out that I would give a lot of information on that is compounding our problem this year is our ability or our inability to regenerate surplus for purposes of using it as revenue in the municipal budget. And I say that because surplus as used as a revenue is one of four categories. It is from a known balance. And we're going to talk about how that gets regenerated and why we're having difficulty doing that. The next item I want to point out is all this 2% cap. If there was no 2% cap, which is statutorily imposed upon us, we could spread this issue out, this problem, over two or three years. That being said, the statute now forces this problem for Lawrence Township all into one These are some of the items I want to talk about. And what is our situation? Again, our use and availability of surplus, our difficulty of regenerating surplus for using the budget as revenue. Obviously, the more surplus we have available, the less need we have for taxation. You have heard a lot about our loss of ratables through tax appeals. You saw an article in the newspaper yesterday about how many appeals have been filed in the state of New Jersey, the loss of those ratables. And as of today, we have 120 appeals already filed for 2012 versus 80 last year at the date of closing. And the closing date is Monday. And when I spoke to one of the tax assessors this afternoon, there were a number that haven't even been entered onto their calculation yet. So right now, we have about $158 million under appeal. Now, we don't know how much of that we may lose or how much of that may be adjusted, but the amount of appeals is outpacing last year's activity already. We're going to talk about changes in assessments by class, our drop in tax collections, which is affected, one, again, by the appeals and two, by the economy, some changes in revenues, both losses completely and other declines, some of our budget appropriation actions, and then the alternatives that we're focused on for purposes of managing this problem. You'll see here is an analysis of our surplus as it appears at year-end or at the opening of the new fiscal year. So our surplus balance by year from '96 through 2012 and our opening balance. You can see that in 2006, we were actually at our peak, or 2008, I should say, we were at our peak at $9.5 million in available surplus. That is money that then gets placed back into the budget for use. Now in 2012, we start our fiscal year with only $5,200,000 in available surplus. Column B shows the amount of surplus used in each budget year. And you'll see that that peaked at $6.2 million in 2008 and it has been declining. So the use of surplus in the budget has been reduced in anticipation of the surplus being less available as a revenue in the municipal budget. Now, you'll see here that we are showing $4,870,000 as utilized in the budget. That amount would be applicable if we were staying within the 2% cap. And in order to do that, we would take our surplus balance down to $150,000. We've had much higher balances, as much as $3.9 million in 2002. So we have been anticipating this declining balance as we've been using less surplus in our budget as revenue. You can see our adopted budgets. Now, in 2012, the budget is not yet adopted, but from '96 through 2011, they are the adopted budget amounts. And then when we look in the next column, surplus used to support the budget as a percent of the budget, again, that's a declining balance. We peaked at 16% in 2006 and we were down in 2011, just under 13% and even lower in 2012. So what that means is, we've been cognizant of the fact that our available surplus for revenue has either been declining or would be affected by future economic activity or appeals that would make less surplus available going forward. Also, when we look at the last column, it shows how much of the surplus was actually being used in order to support the budget. And in 2012, we would be very close to our full amount at 97%. So you've heard me say that our challenge here in Lawrence is to regenerate surplus. Most of our surplus comes from excess revenues, revenues that are realized beyond what we anticipate receiving in our budget. The idea is, you try to create a situation where you are conservative on what you anticipate utilizing, in turn, creating an excess. That excess goes back into the fund balance for use in subsequent years. So as recently as 2008, the amount to be raised by taxes generated an excess of 2.3, almost $2.4 million in excess revenues. Now, that comes from a couple of items. It comes from our percentage that we use, and you're going to hear me talk about in a little bit, our reserve for uncollected taxes where we can be more conservative. Second, it comes from taxes known as added and omitted taxes, taxes that were not placed on our book at the beginning of the fiscal year for various reasons. They weren't, the projects weren't complete, there were additional improvements to homeowners' properties, and those types of tax bills are then sent out in the subsequent year. So we've also seen that source evaporating and drying up because that's an impact as a result of economic activity. People aren't building and obviously, a lot of residents aren't improving their homes for those purposes. So in 2011, which then results in what we have available for 2012, we went from an excess of $2.4 million down to $1.3 million, almost a million-dollar drop in excess cash or excess tax revenues. Miscellaneous revenue anticipated, this is the second category of revenue in our budget. The budget, although it has multiple sources, we categorize our revenues into four categories. Our revenues are surplus, miscellaneous revenues anticipated, delinquent taxes, and current taxes. So our next category is our miscellaneous revenues anticipated. These are items such as interest and cost on taxes for delinquencies, all our state aid, our fees for licenses, permits, ambulance services, et cetera, are all combined into this one category, although they are itemized on the municipal budget. You can see that in 2008, we had an excess of $1.7 million in extra receipts. In 2011, we were down to $456,000. Now, why is that occurring? It's occurring for two reasons. One, due to the economy. Everybody knows what interest rates are doing right now. If you have any money in the bank, you're getting virtually no interest. That includes us. Probably back in 2008 and 2007, we were generating a million dollars a year in, or just shy of a million dollars a year, in interest earnings. We're doing the same thing that we were doing then. The difference is, we have less cash to do it now and interest rates have declined so substantially. That's just one item. So here, this revenue, this excess revenue has been declining, one, because of the economy and it's just not interest on investables, but other items as well. And secondly, we've been forced to anticipate using more of this revenue in the budget to offset the need for taxation and to offset the declining surplus balance. So now, it's kind of a catch-22. You need the excess revenue from miscellaneous sources to regenerate the surplus, but we've had to anticipate using more in the budget and therefore, we're shrinking the excess surplus regeneration and causing a problem on what is available to use. Delinquent taxes, a third category of revenue. Each year, at the close of the fiscal year, our fiscal year is a calendar year, so on 12/31, we have open balances for tax receipts. We are very fortunate because we collect most of our delinquent tax collections. Now, what you see here are the excess collections because in 2011, we only, we anticipated $939,000, but collected about $1,500,000. That excess, again, gets credited to surplus. This excess amount has stayed relatively constant because our receivable balances at the beginning of each year for taxes is staying relatively even. Miscellaneous revenue not anticipated, this is a credit to surplus for items of revenue that we realize in cash but aren't run through the municipal budget. They are for various sources and there's some cell phone leases, if we, if our public works department has metals that get recycled, et cetera. And they have stayed relatively consistent as well. And in 2011, that was $422,000. Lapses of appropriation reserves. At the conclusion of the budget year, so at the conclusion of 2011, there were appropriations that had free balances. Those free balances remain available for use during 2012 for expenses incurred in 2011. At the end of 2012, all of those 2011 appropriations ceased to exist. They no longer are authorized to be spent for any public purpose and those excess amounts go back into surplus. So one of the things that we don't do, just to digress for a moment, is at the end of the year, we don't necessarily penalize departments for not using all their funding. So when you come in for your 2013 or 2012 budget, we don't look at 2011 and say, aha, you didn't spend everything, so therefore, we're going to reduce your budget because that's counterproductive. Why? Because what we don't want to do is create unnecessary buying because you're going to get that money back. So there's no reason to penalize departments for managing their money well and not spending everything that was appropriated. Other are just dividends and credits for various accounting reasons. And then you can see, in 2011, we regenerated $3,405,000 in surplus. And if you look over the prior three years, we were as high as $6 million and you can see that regeneration beginning, that it was declining. We had surplus remaining as $1,106,000 and then again, those two get added together and it gives us our opening balance or our closing balance, basically a change in the foot of the calendar. And again, you've seen the amount of surplus to be used in the budget and what was remaining after that's been applied. You keep hearing me speak about the change in assessed valuation and the impact on taxes. You can see the years, the calendar years, and the assessed valuation. Assessed valuation is the assessed value of all property that is taxable, the amount that we, when we try to raise taxation, get to tax. It includes both commercial, industrial, and residential property. Our 2007 assessed value was $2,695 million and you begin to see a decline in that value. Now, what happens as that's declining? That's putting upward pressure on the tax rate. Think of it this way, four of us go to lunch, we get a bill for $25. We all have to pay our proportion share. We all split it evenly. The next day, one of us can't go to lunch, the remaining three people go to lunch, but the same bill comes for $24. Now, the same three people have to pay a higher proportion of that bill because there are less payers at the table. The same is true when we talk about assessed valuation. It forces up the tax rate because there is less value to tax. Not that any taxpayers were eliminated, but their apportionment went down. So now we show in the next column, the change in assessed valuation. And you'll see from '07 to '08, just under $4 million. '08 to '09, $3 million. And then suddenly, 2009 to 2010, an $84 million drop in ratables. And then we see again, $37 million and $38 million. If you take the aggregate amount of that assessed valuation, that decrease, it's $167 million. And you probably have read in the press where I keep using the number, $160 million as being the drop. That's because the $160 million is from 2010 to 2011. So in three years, we've lost $160 million in ratables, forcing that upward pressure on the tax rate because the loss in tax revenue, and it may be hard for some of you to see from the back of the room because I know it's low, to $100, I'm sorry, $1.4 million in loss revenue. For those of you who haven't appealed your taxes, those of us who haven't, we're sharing and trying to raise that additional amount of money. That's a one-year value if you apply the 2011 tax rate. You can see then, the impact in the third column or the fourth column, on the individual years, the value in taxes that was lost from the decrease in the assessed valuation. And this is in cents. So over those five years, the tax rate was pushed up 6.5 cents simply because the drop in taxable value. Now, it doesn't stop there, it gets worse. When a property owner appeals their taxes, they are entitled to a refund. We have two opportunities to handle those refunds, in cash or credits. In either way, it acts like cash for our accounting because what it has done, you've seen on the previous slide, for example, the amount to be raised by taxation, the excess revenue, has been declining. That's because the amount to be raised by taxes is affected by these refunds. So what we're dealing with here is a $6.6 million, almost $6.7 million impact on an outflow of cash. Now, when we make these adjustments for tax appeals, the township, the municipality, is responsible for refunding the municipal, the county, and the school portion of all of this amount. So our municipal budget absorbs the full impact of these refunds. Why? Because the school and the county by law are entitled to receive their full tax levy. That's okay, but we all have to understand that we're responsible for that impact. Now, the school, we receive no credit for. The county, we do receive credit for in the subsequent year, but we don't get it back in cash. There's an adjustment on the county tax rate on how taxes are apportioned to Lawrence Township. What do I mean by that? Well, the analogy I'd like to use is, you move into a new house and you get your electric bill every month and it's $1,000 a month. And you think to yourself, this is quite high. You call up the electric company and they say, you know what, you're right, your meter was broken. And here's what we're going to do to fix it. Your new bill is $700 a month. So your question is, mine would be, where's my $3,600 refund? Oh no, you don't get a refund, we just adjust it going forward. And that's how the adjustment to the county tax rate works. You're getting your credit, but you're not getting your cash back. So there's an adjustment in the apportionment of taxes. So here, you can see, we've had to come up with six, almost $6.7 million in cash in one way or the other, either a reduction in surplus or checks paid back. This just shows some of the changes in taxable value by property class because what we do is, we group types of property together, vacant, residential, farm, commercial, and exempt. And you'll see here, some of the dollar changes by year and by percentage in these various categories. And you can see, if you, I know it's difficult again, in 2010, the commercial property alone was, that's $78 million of that $87 million decrease. That's a huge number to absorb in any one budget year. The second part of the problem is, once our budget is struck, there's not a lot of maneuvering to absorb these types of adjustments. The other thing I'd like to point out, we have here the category of exempt property at just under $400 million. Approximately $275 million of that total are for nonprofit organizations. The balance is public land. The school, what we own, I'm sorry, what we own, what the school owns, maybe what the county owns, is public land. So $275 million comes off the top and we, all of us, receive no benefit of taxation. The council has been very diligent, has been very diligent in trying to get the attention of the state legislators to get them to understand how this is impacting our community. Because we provide services, you pay for those services, for snow plowing, for recreation facilities, for some of the public works, street repairs, et cetera, they all come out of our tax dollars. So $275 of that is for organizations that are nonprofit and don't have to pay real estate taxes. And that's by state law. Now, I wanted to show also the effect on ratables and how it helps the municipal budget. You'll see here, the blue line on the graph indicates the growth in ratables from 1994 to present. And the red line is the amount of taxes. You can see that the taxes were relatively level, but began to increase as we see the decrease in ratables. Why? Because the growth in ratables produce additional tax income. The additional tax income does, what it does for us is it absorbs the growth in our municipal budget. So as our cost of doing business goes up, those new ratables absorb some of that cost. As they come down, there's less opportunity to absorb those costs and therefore, we see, as the ratables drop, the tax rates are pushed up. I know this is probably very difficult to see from the back of the room, but this is kind of a summary of our revenues. And I won't go over these in a line-by-line detail, but there are a few things I'd like to point out. We've talked about surplus. I'd like to take a look here at local revenues. This is, again, illustrates the fact that we've been pushing up the amount of revenues that we anticipate to help offset the rise in taxation, but it has a negative effect on our excess revenues to regenerate surplus. State aid. State aid. In 2007, it was $5.5 million. In 2010 and 11 and 12, it's going to be $3,909,000, just under $4 million. That's $1,500 taken from all of us and used for the state budget. I also would like to point out that we have Item E, revenue with written consent from DLGS, additional revenues. You'll see here, this category has been increasing. One of the main reasons is now we charge for ambulance service. Also, the red light camera fees are in here. At the same time, as we, and I'm going to be talking about this in a very few minutes, as we've been adjusting and looking at our sources of revenue, we've also been pushing up user fees or trying to create new fees. You'll see here, we have a fluctuation in Item F, which are our grants, and they go up each year as we receive various amounts. Again, Item 4 shows our receipts from delinquent taxes and we've talked about that, but you can see the levels that were anticipated in the budget. Here's some of our, here's the appropriation side of the budget. We've categorized these in a similar fashion that if you were to look at our state budget document that we have to submit, they would be, they would show, they would be consistent with that presentation. So our total general appropriations, you can see where it's $24 million, but if you look at '09, you're looking at 27, 27, and 27 because there have been reductions that we're going to talk about in our municipal operations. Other operations, some of that are very, a big piece of that is the Elsa Bill, which I'm sure some of you have a lot of interest in. We have additional appropriations offset by revenue. Again, that's new sources of revenue that we have been increasing by, with user fees. So those revenues are used, were hired to offset the costs. And again, our grants and their amounts. Our capital improvement fund through 2011, we show, has been relatively constant. That capital improvement fund, that's what we have to do statutorily, is provide a down payment on any time that a municipality authorizes debt. We have to statutorily provide a 5% down payment. School districts are exempt from that requirement. Our debt service, we show is relatively constant. And then we have, towards the bottom of the page here, the And then we have, towards the bottom of the page here, the reserve for uncollected taxes. The reserve for uncollected taxes is a statutory appropriation that is generated by FERNO, and it's a state FERNO. It's not, believe me, it's not my invention. And what this appropriation does, is it, you have an anticipated amount of taxes to collect versus a hundred percent. And the reserve for uncollected taxes closes that gap between what you anticipate collecting and collecting one hundred percent of your taxes that you bill, because not everyone pays their real estate tax. This appropriation is included in its entirety in the municipal budget. So we have to account for the uncollected school taxes, and we have to account for the uncollected county taxes through the municipal budget appropriation. Because the county and the school receive one hundred percent of what they are required to raise by taxes. So we, on the other hand, the municipality, have to budget for that appropriation, to account for the taxpayers who don't pay their taxes, or don't pay any money. This shows our tax collection rates from '07 through '11, and you'll see that although they've been relatively steady, that there is a decline. And again, two impacts on that decline. One is the appeals, and two is the economy. I also'd like to point out that our tax levy being a hundred-and-ten million dollars. Over fifty-five percent of this is for school taxes. Out of that hundred-and-ten million dollars, if we go back, and you look at revenues, in 2011, the municipal government received twenty-one million, five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand out of the hundred-and-ten million. So, again, it's quite onerous on all of us to pay those kinds of taxes, but you can see that we're only just under twenty percent, or around twenty percent, of the total amount of taxes that you pay. So what have we been doing about this? We've reduced staff. Over the last five years, there have been a reduction of about ten percent of our employees. We've had to fund cash reserve for tax appeals, that one, you saw that one-point-six-million dollars in cash that we had to come up with. We've increased various user fees. We've increased our fees for construction permits, for ambulance service, various health fees, all the recreation fees, all of the types of programs that are directly user, that are a function of the user, that only the user realizes the benefits, so the users pay that cost. We have refunded outstanding debt, and we are continuing to do that, as only two weeks ago, two weeks ago today, we've received approval to refund another outstanding bond issue, to take advantage of the lower interest rates. We've bid our electric, we've done phone and energy audits to reduce those bills. We've bid our phone service. We have frozen or reduced other expenses. You don't see it here, but in Lawrence Township, our streets and roads division is responsible for two-hundred lane miles of streets. That doesn't count the counting, and it doesn't count the state roads that go through our community. They operate on about fifty-six thousand dollars a year. I think that's a pretty impressive number to take care of, the streets, the drainage, the signs, any curbing and emergencies that come up. We've reduced our capital expenditures. Over the last five years, I have recommended, and the Lawrence Township Council has implemented, a reduction in capital expenditures, where we have reduced, or we, I should, let me back up on that one. The amounts of new capital projects authorized have been less than the amount paid down. So we have authorized new municipal capital expenditures at a rate of six-point-eight million dollars less than we've paid down. A savings that shows a reduction in debt service and outlay of expenditures from our down payment. I know this is difficult to see, but you can take a look at this, and it's also on our website, right on the front page, as the February 7th presentation. And it shows where we've made reductions by department over the years of our employees. And you can see, prior to the implementation of our full-time emergency medical services, in 2009, we had two-hundred-and-nine employees, and in 2011, a hundred-and-eighty-eight. They are people who provide us with services. And then we, now, the emergency medical services, I carve them out separately, because the user fees go to offset the cost of that service. So what were the alternatives that were examined, in a way, to manage this issue of having a difficulty or an inability to regenerate surplus at an amount necessary, so that 2013 doesn't become a much bigger problem? One of the first alternatives was to explore a referendum to exceed the cap on the tax levy. The referendum would exceed the proposed, or the recommended budget. The recommended budget did include a five-cent tax increase. This would exceed that amount by an additional nine cents to raise two-million-two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars. That's how much we would need to reduce our revenue from surplus, because we believe that is much closer to the number that we can regenerate going forward. Average residential property owner at a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-two dollars. This nine-cent tax increase would generate an additional cost to that property owner at the average of a hundred-and-forty-five dollars, or twelve dollars and ten cents per month. If the referendum was to be approved, I can comfortably say at this particular moment, that the trash collection service would remain as-is. Because it would remain, it would remain an appropriation in the municipal budget. The next alternative that was examined was a solid waste user fee. At one time, we did have a conversation about a utility, but that item has been scrapped as well, and it would go directly to a user fee. Now, the user fee would be charged, and this is an approximate number, to eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-one residential property owners. Because the residential property owners would be paying the full cost of the trash collection through this methodology. We would need to generate two-million-eight-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. Why? Is it more than we need through the referendum? It's because, you heard me talk, or you saw, and you heard me speak about, the tax collection rate. With municipal taxes, we collect a much higher percentage of the revenue that we On our sewer fees, we usually collect around ninety percent of what was billed. So if we were to implement a user fee for solid waste collection, we calculated that as actually being around ninety percent collections. What does that do? That pushes up the amount that has to be collected to account for the amounts that don't get paid. With the tax referendum, that function is already built into the budget with the reserve for uncollected taxes. So you're not duplicating an appropriation. Second, if we were to go to a solid waste user fee, I'm sorry to say, there is going to have to be some administrative costs. You're looking at billing eighty-three-hundred locations, twice a year, plus collecting the delinquencies. So there would be a need for some type of staffing, and we've estimated that very conservatively, but we are at two-point-eight million dollars. The annual cost would be three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, or twenty-eight dollars per month, if we were to institute the user fee. Much higher than you're going to see the amount to be raised by taxation. The third, the third item that was explored, but is no longer under consideration, I know I did get a few phone calls from, maybe from some of you who are even in the room this evening. Individual residential subscriptions is where you would contract directly with a waste holder, we would be completely out of the business. That would be averaged at thirty dollars a month, that would be one cart per week, and any type of bulk pickup would be an additional fee. These fees of seventy-five dollars for a sofa, love seat at fifty, and mattress or twenty-five are what's being paid in another municipality by a local, to a local contractor. So they're the, they're not just arbitrarily set, these were based on what another town, their residents are paying. So, let me just back up then a little bit here. We took a look at, what are we paying here in Lawrence Township for municipal services? If you take a look at the thirteen towns in Mercer County, the thirteen municipalities, this is the one time that you want to be last. We always want to be first. This is the opportunity to be last. What we pay for municipal services, not counting the school and the county, we pay in 2011, the average assessed value at thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. That is the lowest in Mercer County, this number right here. This takes into account the differences in tax rates between the municipalities. That's why you'll see what we call the effective municipal tax rate. You'll see the total tax rate, or for municipal purposes, in the fifth column, ours is eighty-four cents, but when you adjust for the ratio of assessed value to market value, there's an adjustment there, and that creates an effective tax rate of just under forty-three cents. When you apply that to our average assessed value, it's thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And when you do that by municipality, and take their effective tax rate, their adjusted rate for that ratio, and you apply that to their average assessed value, you can see that Lawrence Township residents in 2011 paid the lowest cost for municipal services in the county. Now, if you were at one of my, one of my other discussions, I think that's a pretty good bargain. And then you're going to say, of course you do, Rich, you make up the budget. I get that. You get twenty-four-hour a day, please, protection. You get ambulance coverage, even though your insurance company pays, we don't balance bill. We are very fortunate here in Lawrence Township to have volunteer firefighters. We do provide some support. Is it enough? No. Do I fight with these guys? All the time. But, our, my motivation is to extend the useful life of those volunteer organizations. But at the same time, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we still have to be able to provide and be prepared to have that service. You get, you get snow plowing, you get your, you get brush pickup, you do get trash pickup in this thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And there are other services as well. Some of whom you may in fact take advantage of at our senior center. Others, others you may take advantage of through our recreation, you may use our parks, you may use our playgrounds, you use our streets that we, that we try to keep clean, and we try to keep in good repair. So now, I ask, I have to also ask the question, and when you step back and you think about it, and I'll admit it, I have a family, you know, my, even though my daughter is out of the house, she's still on my cellphone bill, and my cellphone bill on a monthly basis far outpaces this thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. And I'm cheap. I don't think I have all the bells and whistles that go with a lot of cellphone services. So how many of you, and I'm not asking this, how many are paying more on an annualized basis for cellphone service? How many of us are paying more for cable service on an annualized basis? And when you compare that to the level, to what you're getting as far as municipal services, I think it's a pretty good bargain. In Mercer County, these are the other municipalities, and how they provide trash collection, East Windsor does it through a utility. Municipal collection, at the time of this presentation, Yowen Township was still doing it, now they're going private. Contracted out, you'll see Lawrence Township, because we actually put that out to bid. We don't provide the service directly, we use a private service. And subscription services are done in Hopewell, and for the moment, Princeton Township. You know, when I, it reminds me, when we talk about privatized service, that's another thing we've done, as we've reduced employees. We no longer cut our own grass in a lot of locations. We have privatized our custodial service. We have substituted some of our snow plowing operations with contractors, if we get a bad storm event. So we have been looking at some of those items. In addition to using, we have about thirty-five shared services, not counting projects that we do on shared equipment purchases, about twenty with municipalities, and over ten with nonprofit organizations. So we are sharing services. We've renegotiated labor contracts. The current contract period was a four-year period. In 2010, municipal employees did not get a raise. Municipal employees began contributing towards their health benefits prior to the requirement under state law that some of you may be familiar with, from June of 2011. We had it already capped, previous to that, or to this discussion, on legislation about sick leave payouts. Current employees who were here prior to January 1st, 2010, are capped at fifty percent of their days and fifteen thousand dollars. New employees, twenty-five percent of their days, and are capped at ten thousand dollars. Current employees who retired in 2014 are going to be making a contribution in retirement towards their health benefits. Small, I'll agree, but a contribution. Excuse me? And, in retirement, new employees who start after January 1st, 2010, will not be eligible for any health benefits at retirement. In addition to that, municipal employees for Lawrence Township, for the, for the, for the town government, do not receive lifetime health benefits. So there's, the maximum that you can get is ten years, and most times, that doesn't occur, because most people don't retire early enough for that to take place. Why is it so expensive to get rid of trash here in Lawrence Township? Because these are the per-ton, what we call the tipping fees, the cost that we must pay above and beyond the collection cost, to take our trash that's collected curbside to the landfill. Mercer County has the highest rate at a hundred-and-twenty-four-ninety-six, or a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per ton. Out of the nineteen counties, you can see that we far pace all the others. That's not a Lawrence tax, that's a county tax, and it's paid by all the thirteen municipalities for their trash. Now, we go back to the estimates on the cost of, or the individual cost and the impact that a referendum or a user fee may have on our resident. You'll see if we do the referendum to exceed the cap levy by nine cents, the average assessed value, I know there's been some concern when I have put this number out, that some people have said, well, where is a house in Lawrence Township? Where can you buy a house for that cost? This is the assessed value, not the market value. That's how we build taxes. If you were at the average assessment, it would be a hundred-and-forty-five dollars, or twelve dollars and ten cents a month, and we pick some targets if you go up. What we don't show here is that you're below a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. The impact on you would be less. So hypothetically, if you were assessed at a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, you would be looking at a cost somewhere around just under ten dollars, about nine dollars and forty cents per month, if you were at a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. The user fee, as I said, will be applicable to all residential property owners, and it will cost twenty-eight dollars per and it will cost twenty-eight dollars per month, or three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Why, why is that? Because the key word here is residential pickups. If the municipal tax rate is increased by nine cents through the referendum, the cost of trash collection is built into the budget, and then spread amongst all taxpayers, including the mall, and Mercer Mall, and Avalon Run, and other locations. Those properties would pay towards the, towards the nine cents, which would then offset the cost of trash collection. If I'm, if I'm Mercer Mall, or if I'm Quaker Bridge Mall, I'm keeping my fingers crossed because I'm paying for my trash collection already anyway. All the commercial establishments, or most commercial, if not all, are paying for their own trash pickup. So that's why the cost is much higher to do it as through a user fee. Again, remember the lunch analogy. Less people paying, bigger cost, or paying the same cost. We don't get, we don't have the opportunity to spread that out as, as much, and we can, we've already eliminated the individual subscriptions. The other item is, if the referendum was to be approved, and you itemize your income taxes, and you show your real estate taxes as a deduction, you get a further benefit because that increase, that additional amount, would be tax deductible. So we can see at the assessed value at twelve dollars and ten cents, depending where someone may fall, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, the net cost on a monthly basis is somewhere between nine and ten dollars. If you were at the average of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that amount after taxes at the fifteen percent bracket is going to fall to somewhere around seven dollars and forty cents a month. If we implement a user fee, there is no deduction. Just like your sewer fee, there is no deduction from your income taxes for the payment of your sewer fee. I just want to show, this is the two thousand and twelve budget as it first was recommended in January. And we took a quick swipe, and I mean a really quick swipe, at what the budget came in as recommended, and what were, in red are the fixed costs. Meaning these appropriations appear in the budget, which, and we have virtually no ability to change these because they are either statutorily defined, or would exist whether we closed every door and laid off every employee. Now, I'd like to show you, there's he, there's also here an apartment complex trash reimbursement. We keep hearing about these state mandates, right? And I don't hear anything about relief, it's just that the towns are spending too much money. We appropriate two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars because I am, I, Lawrence Township and all the other municipalities in the state of New Jersey are mandated to reimburse multifamily housing developments for the cost of their trash collection. Because if we do not provide curbside collection to that location, so for example, comes to mind, the Manners, they have curbside collection, I don't reimburse it. Avalon Run, they don't get curbside collection, I have to, wait, I, I feel like I have to. But we reimburse it. That's by law, I have no choice. When we send out snowplows, I have to reimburse, there's a formula, and it's not to the same cost, that we have to reimburse certain multifamily or dense housing developments for snow removal, based on our cost. At the statute, I have no choice. I have to reimburse them for street lighting. I have no choice. So we are all reimbursing those costs through our tax dollars back to those locations. The recycling tax, it's thirty-five thousand dollars. Well, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it is a whole lot. That's a state requirement. For every ton of garbage that we, we send to the landfill, we need to pay two bucks, three bucks. Now what happens when we pay that amount? We get a little bit back at a recycling grant. My feeling is, you know what? Don't tax me. Maybe spend fifteen thousand dollars on education, because don't take twenty thousand dollars out of, out of our residents' pockets. It just shows you that there are a lot of things built in here that we have, we have very little ability. Fire hydrant service, can't cut out the fire hydrants. So, that I think is some of my comments, and now, Jane, if you like, we can open up to questions.
You have to excuse me, because I have this in the order, I think. First, you have to understand, I don't really think I need this.
You're doing fine.
I feel fine with that, I have one of those voices. I think all of us agree that we understand the dilemma.
Absolutely.
Okay? I, I understand it. I have the same dilemma in my house. I've got more things coming down the top of us. We haven't gotten raises either for two years, and we have more pressure coming up from the municipality saying, "We want our money." Not just taxes, but now we have Elsa, and we have Trenton Water Works, and we have all. So we understand the dilemma. We do, we empathize. I empathize, and, thank you, by the way, I understand that way, Economics 101. So if I could just go through this. How can we be expected to absorb this and everyone else when nobody's giving us relief? Nobody has given us relief. I mean, let's, you know.
I, I think, I would like to stop.
Yeah, just a minute. I've got a whole list.
One of the things that's important to, to begin this conversation with is understanding, understanding the dichotomy between the public sector and the private sector. In the public sector, we're told what we have to do. And in the private sector, you're told what you can do. Now, why is that important? Because there, there, when we begin to look at reducing appropriations, we hit a floor. And that floor is that we are then mandated to provide some type of service. Now.
I understand that, we understand it. You understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we all understand that, we understand that. We want to know that, well, what I want to know, I don't know if everybody else wants to know this.
We want to know.
Uh, thank you. I, I want to know, first, you're saying we can't spread it out, which to me, you know, if I have a bill that's coming in that I can't pay at once, I do spread it out, even though it may hurt me a little bit more in the end. That's number one. Number two, what provisions are being made for, well, what if the economy does turn around next year? Now we've had this big bump this year, and next year we're going to have that twelve million dollar surplus that you weren't anticipating, wait, I'm not done. And, I'm on a roll. Right, well, I'm on a roll. And what are you going to put in place with all these plans that are going to stop this from being a snowball effect? And then, why are you going to throw tax rebalance in there?
Okay, one of, I, I know I'm not going to remember all those questions, but let me, let me point out a couple of things here. First of all, when the economy turns around, municipal governments, and this is, this is something that every one of us in this room should be totally angry about.
Yes.
Because municipal governments in the state of New Jersey don't raise revenue on assets that produce income. We put, we raise revenue on assets that have value but no income. Residential properties, right? But, the state of New Jersey, when the economy turns around, and we heard last week, two different versions, each side of the aisle, that we're going to have new revenue projections that are going to allow us to have tax, income tax cuts. We don't raise our, our revenue through income taxes and sales taxes. So as the economy picks up and turns around, we're going to lag behind because we don't receive revenue from those two sources. We receive most of our revenue, well, you could, you're shaking your head.
I'm not shaking my head, I'm, I'm like, you know, weighing the, you know, I'm a thermometer right now.
And, and you saw that the state of New Jersey is taking the energy receipts taxes. Now, I'm, I'm not whining about it, I'm telling you, that's a fact of our lives.
Are you allowed to whine? Well, that's, we're whining, you can whine.
But, the point is, when the economy turns around, I don't think anybody should expect that we're going to have this sudden windfall of revenue because we don't raise revenue that way in New Jersey. That's a problem. And when I say that everybody should be angry, it's because, well, we have a regressive tax. And until the state legislator, legislature steps up and decides they want to tackle that issue, I'm just playing the hand of doubt. Now.
I empathize.
Okay, well, I was asked a question, I was asked a question at a council meeting, and I want to bring, I wasn't necessarily going to talk about this, but I think there's some confusion. There's lots of, there's, this is not a fun topic, you know? This is not the NCAA, who'd you pick in your bracket? There is a lot of confusion about all these cuts plus trash cuts. I was asked at a council meeting that, what do we need to do in place of having the referendum? And the referendum, as I showed you, would generate two point, two million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in additional tax revenue. So I put, I put together a list to respond to the question. And this is what you have to do. You have to lay off thirty-six employees. Well, it's, it's the math. Including police officers, including the two firefighters that are, that are currently, the positions are vacant, we're waiting for civil service to, to help us certify that list.
They were never filled.
I know they weren't filled, I don't have a list. Because the applicants have challenged the list, Michael. So as soon as I get a certified list, I'm ready. They're, they remain in the budget. So, so the question to me was, how do we, how do we respond? And here it is, two million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand. These suggestions, at this time, were rejected by the governing body in place of having the referendum to reduce the surplus.
So whose idea was it then, to say, "Well, tell them that if they don't approve our referendum, we're just going to charge them a tax fee, I mean a garbage fee, that's going to be higher than the tax." I mean, which, and more like extortion was what I was saying, you know, I mean, there are some realities here. But that's what it came across as, may not have been your intention.
Okay, Richard's going to take the heat for this. Richard's going to go on the bullpen for a second, and I'm going to take the heat for this. Okay, I'm Greg Foley, I live two blocks down, lived here all my life, member of Slackwood Volunteer Fire Company. I think most of you know me. It was our decision on council not to dismantle Lawrence Township, okay? And we needed to pick something, some service, okay, besides ten police officers. We'll never solve a crime who's breaking into our houses. And I worry every night that somebody's going to break into our houses, okay?
You've got plenty of police, you cannot worry. Let us decide.
Well, then, the referendum.
No, the referendum doesn't address that. We've already dismissed that.
I'm sorry, ten police officers, I was elected, okay? And I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to put this out there. I was elected, excuse me, can I finish? Can I finish, and then I'll give you, I'll let you, okay? Ten police officers, I was not going to lay off, okay? That was my decision.
Political reasons.
What do you mean, political reasons?
Political fallback. What if we ever touched the police?
Why, how could we touch the police?
Well, you know what? Ten, ten police officers, I wouldn't want to see what's going to happen at the border between Trenton and Lawrence Township.
How many do we have? How many police officers do we have?
Richard, how many police officers do we have?
Sixty-five cops.
Thank you.
Sixty-five, right here. It's a large town, right here. Thirty-nine left out of this township.
That's nothing we can do about, you can go down and argue with the state about residential rules.
I don't think anybody wants to see anybody lose their job.
It's not, it's about protection.
That's not, right, nobody wants to see anybody, least of all the police. I mean, I feel better having police officers.
Sure, it's great.
I do. But, I also don't want a town council saying, "My way or the highway."
It's not my or way or the highway.
And again, what I'm saying is, that's how it came across. If you read the newspaper articles, it came across as, "Well, if you don't pass the referendum, we're just going to make sure they all get charged for your garbage individually, and then we'll pay for it, and then we'll see how good we do." Which sounds like, and I know you, I've spoken to you before, when you were out campaigning, you were running. I don't have anything against you personally. I live not too many streets away from you. I'm just saying that as cognizant as you are of the problems in the township, you must be cognizant not just of your little area, but of everybody else. I mean, I look around this room, and I see people on fixed incomes, I know you are. I'm practically on fixed incomes. I see people who are laid off, who are.
My mom's on fixed income, and she lives three houses down from me. And I actually had to support her.
Right, you understand the dilemma. I'm saying, the empathy that we had for you when you were presenting Economics 101, you need to have that empathy towards us. I mean, you're asking us to put the bill. Is it a large bill? No. But if I give you a hundred and forty-five dollars, and I give Elsa a hundred and forty-five dollars more a year, and I give Trenton Water Works another three hundred dollars a year, all of a sudden now, that hundred and forty-five dollar increase that you're asking for because of our economic dynamics is now six hundred a year. That's not just change.
Understand.
And that's all we're saying.
And I'm just saying, and that was the decision that, that, that we made at the council.
Recall.
That's fine, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not leaning, I'm not leaning towards recall, I'm just saying that.
I mean, I live in this town too. I live a couple of blocks away. My interest is, is in this town, okay? Now, the other night Senator Sweeney was in Lawrence Township, and I gave him a piece of my mind. And guess what? And I don't want to get into Republican, Democrat, but we happen to be so-called on the same side. And I gave him a piece of my mind that the state is not doing their job. You see all these telephone poles out here, you see all the big electrical wires and everything? That's property that we should be collecting tax money on. You know who's taking it? Sweeney's taking it. All right?
Are you shocked?
All right, Jane, do you want to?
Yes, sir. Bob Webber, I live in Lawrence, lived here for about twenty years. It seems like the council has proposed a, a solution to a problem by offering a referendum. And a referendum, to me, sounds like heads the township wins, tails the taxpayers lose. And it's almost like a no-brainer. Why would we want to not pass a tax referendum and end up paying more money for garbage collection fees? I'm at a point now where I'm going to go out and encourage people to vote for the tax referendum. I mean, but my, my question is, is this an all or nothing thing here? Reduction of employees? I mean, if you came to us and said, "Hey, we have a problem, and we're not the only community that has this problem, and as our tax assessor has pointed out, we've got a serious problem, so we have to raise some money." So how are we going to do it? Are we going to slam the taxpayers? Or are we going to reduce our budget? Now, we have reduced our budget, two percent for the last five years. Is that enough?
Well, I have, I have, I have an answer. And the thing is, we used to be able to manage our tax rate in Lawrence Township. In other words, when we had a bad year, were we able to raise a little bit, and it wasn't as effective as, you know, as a, as a big a jump it is now, what we call the peaks and valleys? But again, there you go. And I'm going to go to Sweeney and Christie. They decided to tell us, "Well, you can only raise it two percent, okay? You cannot spread it out like you said before. You want to spread out your bills." Well, they said, "We know better than you, you can't do that." And because of this two percent cap that Trenton says that we must do, that's why we're in this bind. Otherwise, you know, we might. Otherwise, you know, we managed the tax rate from Bill Gould to Richard Crowe. And we are very fortunate in Lawrence Township to have brains like this and the brains before us. And I'll stick up for these guys any day. So, that's my, that's, so, anyway.
Going back to this reduction of employees. In essence, you've given us a plan that says, if you don't pass it, you're going to get clobbered. Would there be any potential to talk to the community and say, this is what we have done to try and reduce the causes in order to save you some of your tax dollars? I don't think that's half. I don't see why it's an all or nothing thing.
Well, there's two, I like to take that in two parts. We agree with you on this question of, it's basically, which eye do you want me to make black? I'm going to give you a sluggish, I'm going to give you a black eye on the right or a black eye on the left.
Or a fractured skull.
Well, the reason is, because the legislation that permits the referendum on the levy requires that a municipality go to the Division of Local Government Services and ask to get approval of the question. They send out these guidance documents, known as local finance notices, and they stipulate what's approved as the yes questioning and what's approved as the no question. So what we don't have under this scenario for the referendum is the ability to ask, would you rather we institute a user fee? Or would you rather we increase taxes? Or would you rather these other services get reduced? We're not permitted to have that type of luxury. So that's one part of the answer. So it's from, on high, on what down, on what we have to include as a language.
And those services that would not be permitted on the ballot to be reduced, they then should be, under the purview of the town council to make those decisions.
And the line.
And they have not made them.
Well, they haven't, they have made that in the past, as I showed you.
2% a year.
We've been reducing the budget. We've reduced that, we've reduced surplus as a revenue because we knew that there were going to be hard times coming. We've tried to stay away from going before the local finance board on funding these tax appeals. And I'm going to tell you right now, we con here, I saw Mike Radcliffe, I'm going to go on, I'm going to say it publicly. We have, as I said, as of about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock this afternoon, 120 appeals that are going to go to the county tax board. That's about $158 million in ratables that are under consideration for reduction. I'm not saying we're going to lose 158 million. But my, our problem, our problem is that we have no more reserves to absorb the hit. So the question's going to become, what do I do at the end of this fiscal year? And we may have to go to the local finance board and ask for approval to fund those refund amounts over the next three or five years. And with that comes oversight from the Division of Local Government Services. So now, back to your question. I thought that, you know, these are some of the things that have occurred. Reduction of employees. We've increased the user fees. That offsets the amount to be raised by taxation. You know, we had done a refunding of our debt. We've reduced capital expenditures. We've reduced our debt service. So it may not be to everyone's satisfaction. Somebody, a resident called me the other day and said unequivocally, we should not plow snow off the streets in Lawrence Township. That's her, that was her opinion. She's entitled to that opinion. Lady, thank you.
Hi, Maria Delaney, 94 Harmony Avenue. Is this tax paid? Does that include the 17% municipal tax, 9% school tax, 4.5 county tax, and a double-digit store tax? I think what's happening is, I look at my bills like everybody else. My daughter's going to Ryder, keep it at local. I just can't afford this. So what happens if I just default on my customers? Where's that list? We have over 12,000, what is it, 12 million? Hurry up. We have all these houses in foreclosures. If you and I go to lunch and we skip out on the bill, they're going to come after us. How can these people who owe taxes skip out? That's how the mom goes to jail. Why isn't anybody knocking on the door and taking these things?
Hold on, okay. Let me, let's take about the delinquent tax collections.
Okay.
There's two ways that that works. The first is, at the end of the fiscal year, we have a tax receivable. At the close of 12/31. There is a statute that requires our tax collector to place in tax sale all those unpaid delinquencies. We do that. Which is where you see the revenue that comes back into the budget as a receipt from delinquent taxes. So now, but there's a second part of that. If any of those property owners are in bankruptcy, then those arrears we cannot collect until they come out of bankruptcy. But we can, we do go after the delinquencies. Now, let me go back to your first part of your question. The cap is not, is a cap on the municipal, there's a separate cap on the school, and there's a separate cap on the county.
Let me ask you this.
One more. Go ahead, one more question. Then I have the question.
The state of Utah implemented a four-day work week. Everybody was dead set against it. We can't do this. I have daycare issues. In the year that they did it, they saved millions of dollars. Is that something that they could look at? Not the police, the police should never be touched. If a pimp daddy didn't try, you guys are saying you're going to get with the cops. You're crazy.
Okay.
So why can't the municipal workers work four days?
Okay.
Good suggestion.
Well.
State had furlough days.
Okay, furlough days have to be negotiated with the unions. Lacy Township is just lost at the Public Employees Relation Commission. They were ruled against because they unilaterally instituted furlough days against their employees. And the union grieved it, filed, and won. So unless the unions agree to that, I can't go by the way.
Is it something that you could look into maybe as a cost-cutting measure?
Well, our labor, our police contract expires at the end of this year.
Not the police, but.
But let me finish. And our other contracts don't expire until next year. Mike.
Mike Burzich, I'm in Villanova Drive. First, I want to thank the association and you guys for coming out tonight because, you know, I've lived in South Lawrence my whole life, as many of you have here. And I think it's a viable part of the community, and a lot of times it's overlooked by the rest of the township.
Yeah.
But the main thing is, the reason I'm here tonight is I was at the, help me out, zoning. I went to zoning last night. And unrelated, doesn't matter what the case that was heard in front was the issue. The issue was, walking out to the parking lot, the amount of citizens of this township that said, okay, the next thing we're going to do is go after the tax hike. So my is basically a comment to everyone, including yourselves, is that if we don't, we talked about revenue about five times tonight, and about $8 million in lost revenue of ratables. We can't have our cake and eat it too. We need to either fill the businesses with tax-paying business or we have to accept higher taxes. We can't have it both ways. And a lot of people in this room were with me at the meeting last night, and they wanted both ways. And that's not how it works. You know, from the Brunswick Circle to Bunker Hill Road, okay? Not including the disaster across the street at the Trent Motel. There's 11 vacant properties for business. We should be addressing that to raise revenue and make it, make those places viable. That's going to bring crime down. That's going to bring property value up. Is by getting those people, we need to be more in tune to bring the business in. Okay? And as far as bang for your buck, I do believe that Lawrence Township is one of the best bang for your buck. Just drive around in a snowstorm next time, okay? The question I have is, with that, that was just a comment. The question I have is, do we have a sustainability committee in the township? One of our standing committees?
Yes, the Green Team. And the Green Team works, has worked in the past with the Environmental Resources Committee. And those two committees are under consideration for joining together because we feel that it would be more effective. Because it's some of the same people, and it's basically a pooling of resources to implement programs. And we're a bronze-certified community by the, by Sustainable New Jersey.
But not only sustainability for the environment, I'm talking about sustainability for us as taxpayers. Okay, she brought up a wonderful point about the, and I'm a union member, I understand that. It's labor, it's a lot of issues. However, you know, we've got a lot of talent in this township. And bring those people together to say, what can we do in the next five years, 10 years? I'm in for the long haul. I've got two young kids here. What can we do for 25 years so that this mess, a lot of it is brought on by the state, that we can override and at least conquer, because those nickels are going to turn into dollars.
Well, and the other thing that Councilwoman Lewis just pointed out. We also have, as far as economic issues, we also have the Growth and Redevelopment Committee to try to attract businesses and work with businesses. Now, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you on filling these vacancies. But I want you to also understand that it's important that a municipal government in the state of New Jersey cannot provide the tax incentive other than real estate taxes. We can't provide relief from the real estate taxes other than through an appeal for a business to move in. We can't create opportunity to reduce your income taxes for every employee you hire. That comes from the state. So we have limited, we just don't have that ability. We don't have that authority.
The thing is that zoning and others, and administration, council, and us need to be on the same page. Because we can't gripe about vacant properties and then, and then not, you know, not want to film with the applicant. You know what I'm saying? We all need to be on the same page. It's not really a comment to you, it's a comment to everyone in the room. You have to, everyone has to be on the same sheet of music, council, administration, and the public.
Brett. Brett Smith from Greater Eldridge Park Neighborhood Association. I'm just wondering, are we leaving money on the table? I believe this year we have Special Olympics, which is hosted here in New Jersey. Has got an activity that's going to bring 75,000 people into the township this summer. That seems to me like something we ought to be thinking about. These people are coming. They're going to need food. They're going to need hotels. They're going to need services. As far as I know, the township's not doing anything with that. So it seems to me like there's probably opportunities that are not being considered that probably need to be considered.
Well, let's talk about the hotels. We have here in Lawrence Township an ordinance that is consistent with state law that allows us to have a room tax on hotels and motels. So that, we are receiving that revenue. We certainly can't use public money to build a hotel. So restaurants, same thing. You know, that's what I was pointing out earlier, that when this, when the economy turns around, our revenue doesn't come from sales taxes. Our revenue doesn't come from income taxes. Our revenue comes, half of it comes from property taxes. The other items that you're referring to, well, we will not receive money. For example, we hear about, oh, the city of Philadelphia is going to sponsor a conference. And they're going to pick up, you know, $15 million. Yeah, because they have sales taxes and business use taxes and income taxes. We just don't have those revenue sources. And we're not permitted by law to institute. We're not permitted to do it. Okay, all right, I'll be right with, next, sir, you're next. No, go ahead, sir.
I'm Tom Breder. I live in Woodmont. Do you have discussed the option of bankruptcy?
Well, because we're far from that point, number one. Number two.
Sounds like it'd be worth it to take a hit. It's a different than an 18-year-old child who experiences a lawsuit.
Well, you can see that in 2012, we can balance our budget with what we have available. What we're trying to be is proactive for next year. So we're not spending more than we have. We're actually trying to prevent that from occurring, number one. Number two, back in the 1930s, there was a near default on municipal debt and a near bankruptcy of a New Jersey municipality, which then created a host of laws, which most recently were amended in 1962, which we are still following. The local budget law, a lot of the local fiscal affairs law, a lot of the local bond law were adopted at that time and are still in place today. And that's what we are required to follow through what I was referring to earlier as the Division of Local Government Services. So again, we see, we had seen this problem coming. We tried to absorb it. But when you lose 80-plus million dollars in one particular year, that's not predictable. The other losses you're trying to manage. But that was a bit of an implosion, yeah, absolutely.
No, I, you know, you bemoan the lack of realism. The decrease in taxes, the adjustment. Go ahead. To get you showing the chart, the growth in such revenue from the inflation in prices and assessments in 1994 to 2007. So maybe some of that excess money or overcharging, if you will, at that period of time should have been placed in a radiation.
Well, it was.
It's not a period because you're bemoaning the fact that you don't have a surplus fund that appears to have hit the spin of the last five years.
Well, and if we go back, I don't want to go back over every chart, but you would have noticed that some of that money went back to the taxpayers. And some of that money was held in reserve. And the problem was that we were, in fact, not able to regenerate at the same rate that we were using. And then, by forcing up some of those other revenues, it compounded the problem. I promise.
Sir, first of all, a compliment, because I know the people who work on the county council, you put in a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort for that. So you're going to be commended for that. I think what we want to try to do is be creative in how we close the gap. But my premise is that as far as revenues and expenditures, there's three pillars of municipal government. Fire safety, police, and sanitation, which means trash collection for the most part. You take any of those away, and we cease to exist as a properly functioning town. You've got to look for something else to take away besides trash. Because if you privatize trash, if people don't pay the bills, the collectors don't pick up the trash, now you've got a health hazard. And that's only going to compound the problem. So please look back, look at the budget. Everybody that's a homeowner is paying these property taxes. When it comes to a capital budget, okay, I may need a new roof. If I don't have the dollars in the bank, the roof won't get done till next year. Or we'll do a patch where there's a hole and water coming in. But you've got to defer some things in order to keep the three pillars intact. And I don't know whether that includes the possibility of reducing the number of police officers by one or two through attrition. Or reducing the number of fire vehicles in service by one, perhaps for a few years' period. Or don't replace an engine right away. But there's lots, these are big-ticket items. There's lots of ways that you can probably sharpen a pencil and find things here. And I say this respectfully, for the effort you're all invading. You cannot take away fire, police, and sanitation. That's my take.
Okay, I just, I want to respond, not taking away the sanitation. Under any of the scenarios that we examine, there was no taking away of the trash collection. There were two alternatives to paying for it and one alternative on how to provide the service. So it is not our intention, whether the referendum passes or if the referendum fails, to take away trash collection.
I mean it in the, let me explain that. I mean it in the context that the reason we're all here is, the number gets thrown up, we're going to be facing a 17% tax increase unless, and we're going to have trash collected taken away unless we approve it. Come up with something else to bite on, because I frankly not feeling that that's a fair way to present it. It can't be that our choice is between getting slammed for a higher fee on trash collection or that we're going to have to just automatically come up with 17% more revenue. It's a big fight for a lot of people.
You know, and I understand.
And I know you don't mean you're going to stop trash collection. But that shouldn't be, that's like a, I hate to say this, but that almost comes like a threat to us, the taxpayers, about, you know, the risk of not having trash collection or having to pay an exorbitant higher fee.
And I understand that frustration.
But I say this respectfully, and I'm looking wide-eyed.
And I understand your frustration because we, when I say, me, myself, and the council have been equally frustrated with what you read in some of the press reports on what was presented. And I have to tell you, I did the presentation, I sat through hours of the meeting, and I picked up the paper the next morning, and I thought to myself, where'd that happen? Metford? Because that's not what I said. Because that's not what I said. I, I was, my point is, all, what's that?
It's what you need.
No, it's not what I...
You're trying to vote for this for 17% or pay for our garbage, so what do you need?
Because the, well, what we, what we're also attempting to do in this process is to make it transparent, so there was no surprise as to what would occur if the referendum didn't get approved.
That's a double-edged sword, we have no choice. We don't pay our taxes ever, then we have a lot of foreclosure, we could lose our homes. So, what choice do we have? None. Which brings me back to the question, what do we...
Excuse me, I'm going to call on somebody else because he had, he did have an opportunity at the beginning.
Pete Pahn. The thing, there was an article in the paper here about this snow removal thing. Apparently, you've got 87,000 dollars that wasn't spent. And you've got 88,000 you're already using for next year. So, why can't we, can we get that 78,000 to be thrown into the mix here, or are you going to hoard that like you would, make a surplus out of that? Now, well, basically, what I'm trying to say is, are not only that 78,000, but are there other areas, you've looked at all these areas, that maybe we could save 78 here, 50 here, 40 there, maybe get this down some?
Right.
Not, because you definitely have that 78,000, I mean, it's right here in the paper. So, what are you going to do with that 78,000?
Maybe they shouldn't be...
Yeah, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I got everything I wanted to say about this area.
First of all, let me be clear on one point. It's not my money.
I'm not talking to you.
No, you're not...
I'm not saying it's your money.
But you said, that I'm going to hide the money.
No, it's not you, but some...
Sir, excuse me. You said...
I didn't say hide, I said...
Where are you going to put it, where are you going to, where are you going to hide the money?
I don't know.
But let me point out, the 78,000 is in a trust fund for snow removal. The 88,000 that remains in the 2012 budget will have to be handled in two ways. First, the calendar year, which is the fiscal year, also includes months that could have snow at the end. We saw in 2011, an October snowstorm. Second, there have been prior years where we've had as many as two storms in December. So, we need to keep that money in the budget for purposes of year-end snow activity. Second, any money that would be unexpended could go, will go into the, into the trust for future use and help the 2013 budget. But, as I said earlier in my presentation, anytime, and we haven't, we haven't done the reimbursements yet, and the gentleman said he's from Woodmont, anytime we activate our snow removal, whether it's for de-icing or actual plowing, we are required to reimburse those associations for, for a cost based on a per-mile charge that we incur for labor and materials. Then I have to pay those, those public units for their, for their charges. Not, it's not dollar-for-dollar. They do not get dollar-for-dollar. But what they do get is they're going to get some portion, some portion out of 88,000. So, if I have to, I need it for October through December, I have to reimburse the homeowners' associations, and I'm going to put the rest in the trust fund. There's the 88,000.
I'm not talking about the 88,000. I'm talking, I'm talking about the 78,000 you got left over.
The 78,000 is from prior years and is in, is in a trust fund. That's, that's separate money, that's not part of this equation. That money has been fully accounted for, budgeted, and taxed.
But if, but if you had had snow, a lot of snow this year, that 78,000 would be gone, right?
Absolutely.
Because you would have used it. So, since you didn't use it, why can't you switch it over into, into the general fund with a surplus, whatever you want to call it?
Because the one benefit we will have is that may help us in 2013.
Let's not worry about 2013 at 100%. Let's worry about right now, if you have some extra money left over.
Well...
I'm just, I'm just saying this is a generalization.
That's what Carol knows.
I'm not talking specifically maybe about snow removal as such, but I'm just saying, is there, are there any other types of monies? In other words, are you, the council and yourself, sir, are you actively making sure that we don't have all these maybe little things of money lying around that could be, that could be put into this surplus, so at least we might reduce by a cent or two? So, maybe it would be seven cents instead of nine cents, that's all. Now, you've done that in the past, I've seen it happen.
Okay, if I can respond.
Okay.
I'm going to respond, and I will take another question.
All right, fine.
In the past, in the last couple of years, the council...
Has asked.
The council has asked, and I have provided, an answer to a question. What is the value on the, on the penny of a tax rate? And this year it's 252,000. And what would we have to do to reduce any tax increase by one penny? And in the past, sir, you're absolutely right, we would have taken a look at the 88,000 and trimmed maybe 5,000 or 7,000 off that. And you, and you look for ways to come up with 250. Now, we've been doing that. So, all those little nicks and scrapes have been, a lot of those have been accounted for, right? Number one. Number two, our problem is, we would have to come up with at least that 252, but our problem is 2.3 million. We need to do something drastic because the problem is suddenly drastic. Nancy.
Yes, do we really need to operate with such a big surplus from year to year?
Well...
I mean, because why couldn't you come down on what you need to carry in the next year to decrease our liability?
A couple, a couple reasons that you want to be, that you want to have a good surplus balance. One, your, the rating agencies, the bond rating agencies are going to look at, at that, and that's only going to drive up your cost of borrowing. Two, we had an event such as Hurricane Irene, that required us to use surplus funds to pay for expenses that were completely unplanned for and were due to the emergency. Some of those funds were handled through various, through various provisions in the local budget law and the local bond law, and we reduced 178,000 or almost 180,000 dollar problem down to 33,000 that affected this year's budget. So, and third, the other part of the problem is, you need some of that surplus for cash flow. Because if we don't have good cash flow, we're going to be in a position that we have to go borrow cash and pay interest just to keep the lights on.
But interest rates are very low right now, and again, you need to operate with such a big surplus and then put the tax liability on us. I mean, that's, you know, that's a part of, I mean, we don't, I don't mind paying a little bit more, but if you guys still want to operate with all this extra money, why should we have to foot that? Because we may not be here in 2013.
We're not in the met ball tomorrow night, I'm leaving.
You say that some places don't make, I'm assuming this is Rider University, Prep School...
Correct. Rider University pays, does pay some property taxes on a small portion of some fields in the back of their location, but yeah, no, generally, they don't pay taxes. The prep school don't.
They don't, yes, they don't make like donations like Princeton University does to Princeton.
Rider makes a very small donation, and the prep school, we're waiting to see if they make their donation for 2012, but I can tell you, it pales in comparison to what Princeton University pays to Princeton.
And please tell them we sit down every year with them, and I also want to go back to my talk with Sweeney. I said, we have nonprofits, if they pay in taxes what they're supposed to pay, we're not going to carry their weight. And he looked the other way. All right? So, he's a Democrat, I'm a Democrat. Guess what? That's what I got.
Are you still a Democrat?
Back, back, back. Who's sure?
My name's Tom Morris.
I'm sorry.
My name is Tom Morris, I've been a township president for a good part of my life, and a lot of you know me. My concern, well, I've got to echo the same thing that everybody else said, I think we got a choice between bad and more bad for the payoff. And it would be nice if we had an alternative to choose on some of the things we might be able to give up as a solution, but since that's not happening, my, my other concern would be, what happens if next year, like, say, a lot of these businesses that are vacant on Route 1, more of them open up, more township presidents leave because it seems like there's a growing number of wholesale signs around. Are you guys going to do the same thing to us next year?
Well, now, we're trying to avoid just that by, by adjusting this, by making this correction into 2012.
Because at home, when I, when I have a problem with my bills, I do without something. I'll cut back on my cable, I'll get rid of the HBO for a couple of months, I'll lessen my deductible on my car, whatever. It seems like I'm not being given that option here, I'm either going to pay a certain amount or I'm going to pay more.
Sir.
Mike Cowell, Trumbull Avenue. I understand what he's saying there, but government and private doesn't work the same. Government, they can spend, spend and spend, federal government, they just print money. My question is, every time I go down Route 1 near 95, I see that beautiful bridge over there, and I say, what a waste of taxpayer money. I drive down, I drive up Spruce Street, I drive up Spruce Street, and I see those empty car lots here, I says, Walmart should be here paying us taxes.
Walmart was approved. Well, Walmart was approved, and I was on the board that approved it.
Why did they walk away?
Because the economy tanked in 2007.
I've been to some of those meetings, and I've got so much pressure against it.
The approval got challenged also by residents that didn't want somebody to come in that pays minimum wage.
Well, they walked away because of the protests, that's why. How about the hospital? What's the story with the hospital? Why, why, why didn't we get the hospital?
First of all, when the hospital came to us, they did not want to go through the master plan process. They were in a hurry, okay? We have a master plan process because Lawrence looks great, and they didn't want to go through that. Number two, they wanted to go on place, not pay taxes, okay? And guess what? They can't pay their mortgage right now, and this apparently, all this money that Hopwell's supposed to be getting, that's the first thing that's gone, and Hopwell's not going to get that money. You're not getting that 500,000 then?
The other part of the problem is that, that the hospital, to go on Princess Road, needed to assemble another 10 acres of land, and they couldn't get the adjacent property owner to relocate in order to assemble that land. Number one. Number two, the hospital came forward and said, this is going to be a community hospital of a, of a smaller number of rooms. They came to do a presentation with their architect, and they put up a nice PowerPoint presentation. Suddenly, I see a PowerPoint with an overlay on the site, and I said, what's that? He goes, oh, you weren't supposed to see that. Because the intent was to build a much larger than what they were presenting. So, there were a number of issues. The hospital is a tax-exempt entity, just like Rider University, just like the prep school, and they don't pay taxes. They only would pay taxes if there were any medical arts buildings. And when they were going to keep trying to expand, the question is, would there have been any taxable buildings left? Because the, the, the non-tax portion would have been growing.
I think there's, there's got to be a look at what's classified as taxable and nonprofit because when you have a company...
Again, I did my due diligence and tried to talk to the senator, and he brushed me off.
When you have somewhere like Lawrence, Lawrenceville Prep School, I'm sure that they've got more money in the bank than this whole township's got, okay? Now, how do you, how do you call that nonprofit?
Well, legislation was introduced last session, it just hasn't been reintroduced this session. So, we need to get some lobbying involved.
But I want to caution everybody on, on that particular, if we're talking about the same though, we want to make sure that we're also going to receive funds for municipal services and not just for schoolchildren. The difference is, I'm not saying that the schools shouldn't be entitled to their share. Each taxing entity should be entitled to their fair share. Because if all the money, if they, if they come up with a formula that we should pay for the schoolchildren, that's helpful in general, but it's not going to help this problem, it's not going to help offset snow plowing, it's not going to help offset other public works or recreation facilities, none of that is going to be offset. So, we need to actually just tax those units as if they were any other property in town, sir.
Quickly, can you tell us, sir, by the way, I should have given my name, Don Pittcock, I have a glen lane, but can you tell us if this 17% increase for this year of budget, or next year of budget, is going to be institutionalized, or is it a one-year event? Or is everything just going to be 17% more from this point forward?
Well, the best, the best I can tell you is, that will remain as our base. The question is, what happens to any growth in that base? And I, and we're, if in September, we'll be more prepared to begin to tackle that issue for 2013. But at this moment, that, that increase in taxation will remain as part of the new base.
When you were showing initially the cost of the government here over a number of years, and you were using everything in constant dollars, I mean, and there was no inflation adjustment whatsoever?
Because that was, that, they were just amounts that were included in our budgets. So, it's a budget year to budget year to budget year.
Right, but in other words, to make your argument better, to show what the town has done to keep costs down, I would think if you would use constant dollars as a way of presenting your information, you might have gotten a less hostile review.
Well, you're right, and I, that's a very good point. Now, we're into economics one of two. Never pass on...
I love that class, you do one each, I hear you.
We're just going to have time for one or two more questions, John.
Yeah, the gentleman made a good point. What about if we made the 17% increase for one year, or two years? Then you go back to your original base, say, 15%, because you, by law, you can do 2%. It just, then it just lets council say, okay, you know what, next year I don't have that 17%, I back down 15% smaller, how can I make this work? And maybe that they have to raise it again, maybe 10%, but not the whole 17. Once you've done with the 17, it's forever. Is there a way that we can say it's a one-time shot for one or two years? So that you've got to think outside, so you have time to think outside the box, like people have been asked for...
That, that's a good suggestion, John, but without giving that a whole lot of thought and to be able to respond, the tax levy becomes the base number for each new year. You can reduce the amount of the, of a levy, but I believe we would have difficulty creating the levy and then backing that number off. I've never, frankly, I've been doing this for a little bit of time now, and I've never heard of it where you have a one, one-time issue on the tax levy. You're going to have one-time revenues, but in the miscellaneous category.
So, you've never heard this, so this is something like thinking outside the box?
But, but what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to point out is, it, it would not be something that would just be applicable to Lawrence, it would have to be applicable to every, everybody in the state, and we would have to work through the local finance board or the Division of Local Government Services to have them do the mechanics for all that kind of stuff.
Judy in at 71.4, you're using surplus to meet a lot of your expenses when you showed us your budget. So, in reality, it's if you're using a savings account to meet expenses. You're increasing the tax ratables and the money that you need, and that becomes your base for next year. So, in effect, that increase is going to be there next year and the year after. Inevitably, in New Jersey, we have too many municipalities that operate this way. We have too many school districts that operate this way. We have all this overhead. Now, with the fiefdom and the government, nobody wants to face that we have to do this. They put county superintendents in in order to eliminate the local school boards and the local districts, and then they never moved in that direction. So, now we have a county superintendent that we really don't need, but that's the way it functions in other states. So, in lieu of changing that, if towns like Lawrence don't start sharing services and sharing supplies and getting under the nest of a number of towns, towns will be filing bankruptcy. That's what's eventually going to happen.
Well, let me, let me respond to a couple of pieces of that. It may sound surprising, but I agree with you, there are too many local, local units of government in the state of New Jersey. I agree. That would push guys like me possibly out of work. I get that. But objectively, it's a problem. Second, one of, one of the fundamental changes, we could have, we could see towns consolidate and some disappear. I think that's only half the problem. You have to change the tax structure in the state of New Jersey at the same time because that will then create opportunity to regionalize services and to share in those revenues in a, in a, in a way that's based on people's ability to pay and on, on assets that perform and produce income. I'm not going to comment on, on the, on the issue of county superintendents. But on your last point, we do, in fact, have in excess of 20 shared services with other municipalities. We have about 10-plus services that we share with private organizations. We have a list of items that we have shared, and I'm not calling them shared services in for this purpose of this conversation, where we've done joint equipment purchases... for this purpose of this conversation, where we've done joint equipment purchases, particularly with the Prinstons, for large pieces of public works equipment. So that hasn't gone unnoticed. That has been going on here for a long period of time. We have privatized some of our services. We get that. You know, at the last, at the last presentation, you know, I was asked about business friendly and one of our inspectors. We have one housing inspector for a town of 33,000 people. Now, what does that housing inspector do? He does a lot. Because what he does is, he does all the inspections of rental properties. He does all the inspections of transfers of properties. He does nuisance complaints. So you know, when somebody here is calling up to say, my neighbor hasn't painted, or my neighbor hasn't done something to the property, that's the one guy. When he goes on vacation, it stops. So now, I can share that service. I can call up another town and say, how about we share with our housing inspector, and you pay him for three days a week? But when somebody goes to close on their house, and he's only here on Tuesdays and Fridays, people are going to have to get used to the new way of doing business. And the one gentleman left. And I, there's one more thing I agree with. We need, and we had a two-hour director's meeting today, we need to go back and fundamentally ask the question, what is, as a municipal government, do we need to provide? And you know what, frankly, and I'm not, I know what's going to happen, this is going to, now come brush collection. We don't have to provide brush collection. That's a service that's not fundamentally required. Police, for public safety, the trash, things like that. The gentleman was correct. We don't have to provide recreation programs. We don't have to provide, I can't say all the health programs, because a lot of them are mandated by the state.
Real quick, just back on, to touch on your shared services, and he told you how many shared services you do. You all know we have a county government, right? You all want to help with this problem. Pick up the phone, call the county freeholders, call the county executive, and say, what are you doing to help with shared services in Mercer County? What can the county do to do for the health departments? What can the county do for the road departments? You know, we need help there. I keep bending the ear of my freeholders and my county executive, but it takes a little help.
All right, I'm going to take one last question, the gentleman in the blue sweatshirt, and that's it, because Jane mentioned we're going to try to be done by nine, and it's five of.
You know, one of the things we have a problem with is loss of revenue. How much of this came from revaluations?
Well, we've had loss from tax appeals, 160 million in ratables, which in 2011, if we apply that tax rate, is $1.4 million of revenue.
Now, what would happen if everybody here filed a tax appeal?
It's going to drive the rate up even higher.
But it would be shared proportionally, you said it was just some people.
Well, the problem is, you're not going to get 100%.
Then you just, you know, just do a new tax assessment.
Which we are ordered to do in 2000, next year, 2013. We've been ordered by the county board taxation to implement a revaluation next year. Tax should do the process, and then it will be effective for the second half of 2014. Jane, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I hope that we were able to answer some of your questions. Thank you. (applause)